Council to be held on Tuesday, April seventh, twenty twenty at seven P M. The City Hall Building, nine fifteen South Octoberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am, for a moment of silence. If we would take a moment of silence thinking of the situation that we continually are in and more important, those that are really in need throughout the state and the country. If you'll join with me for just a minute. Thank you. Would you join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no proclamations. And I really have no announcements. I don't think I need to go through everything that's been going on. I'm trying to keep the council up on all of the activities that are happening. I'm involved in phone calls every day with other individuals. Today was very interesting with Dr. Gupta out of Washington who used to be on CNN, I believe. A very well-known and well-spoken doctor. And it was really quite interesting listening to mayors around the country. So we've got to listen to mayors from New York as well Jersey, from San Diego and Washington, Seattle, all of the areas that we call hotspots and trying to benefit from what they have to say. I did write in the memo a quick thing about it. It was very interesting that a lot of the experts indicate that the only way that we're going to get through this is isolation and not medicine. And that was a pretty powerful quote to make. In any event, let's move on. We have a call to the public. Ms. Landers, do we have any?
Just one tonight.
Thank you, ma'am, if you would.
Kara Peters, owner, Black Sheep Imports. Hello, I would like to voice my stern disapproval to the idea of an increased sales tax. I own four businesses in town, two of which are retail. Imposing more taxes only encourages more online sales and deters people from making purchases. It's not like the funding would be going to help businesses. It would actually hurt them. Our tax rates are outrageous in comparison to other places. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pollock, thank you. Do we have questions? Hearing done. All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, I'm sorry. Opposed nay? You were almost counted as a nay there. Moving on to old business. I'm sorry, consent agenda. There's one item on it, so I the symbol items A, approval of the minutes of the regular session, a mayor and council held on March third, twenty twenty, at seven P M.
I move that we approve consent agenda, item A.
Thank you. I'll second that. With a statement that it is so nice to be so caught up that we're getting these minutes as quickly. So, thank you. Thank you, Ashley and I. Do, Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Old Business, item number three, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O twenty dash O one, amending the city code section ten point one point eight nuisance. This is the second reading after this has come back several times. But does anybody have any questions of Ms. Coleman or Mr. Ledbetter? Hearing done. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance O dash two zero dash zero one, amending the city code section one zero point one point eight.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Coronado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Nay.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes six to one. Item number five. I'm sorry, four. Not even just elects you, that's just a flat. Discussion of possible approval of ordinance O twenty dash O four, amending the city code to repeal and remove fees within the city code and approval of a city fee seducent. Again, this is our second reading. This has been advertised in multiple locations, certainly on our website for months.
Since November.
Since November, yeah. So there we are. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Coleman?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to thank you and Ashley for putting in as many hours as you did on this. I would not want to have to do this.
Ashley was a real trooper.
Thank you very much.
Guess it's going to be such a nice thing to have everything in one location instead of spread out throughout the code and constantly changing and moving numbers and so forth. So it's a big deal. Thank you.
Harry got some credit too.
Yes, she does.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance zero dash two zero dash zero four, amending the city code to repeal and remove fees within the city code and approval of a city fee schedule.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Coronado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item five, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O twenty dash O five, amending article eleven point three point four of the Bisbee City Code entitled Library fines and collection policies and providing for repeal and severability. Ms. Coleman.
So this is again coming back to you for approval. We saw this, I believe, at your last meeting. And because putting the fines on the fee schedule pretty much did away with the majority of what was in the code, this just doesn't always screen one that section.
Do we have a motion? I move that we approve ordinance O twenty dash O five, amending article eleven point three point four of the Bisbee City Code entitled Library Fines and Collection Policies and Providing for Repeal and Severability.
Second.
Ms. Coronado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacchino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Old Business, new business, we just did it all. Discussion of possible approval of item number six, to purchase an oil distribution truck. Mr. Harrow.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Previously, you all approved for us to go out to request a proposal for an oil truck. We did receive three proposals. Ultimately, we chose one for inspection. The vehicle is in, I believe Mesa. We did have our, having mechanic go along with our streets department or streets department supervisor and Matthew, our operations manager, they did inspection. They were satisfied with that. After that, after reviewing that, we came across a vehicle that also met our needs, which cost less money. They're both two thousand and seven vehicles. I am recommending that we purchase the vehicle that's less expensive. However, I, you know, either, either of these vehicles are acceptable. They will meet our needs. With that, I was entertaining the questions you all had.
Where's the second vehicle?
It's out kind of aisle.
Is it enough, is it?
It's actually a larger vehicle.
And the price difference will cover our traveling, getting up there.
Yes, sir. The, the price of the vehicle is sixty-seven thousand dollars with a two thousand dollar freight charge. The vehicle in Mesa is a seventy-nine thousand dollar price, five hundred dollars shipping. We would probably forego that shipping because we would go and pick that up ourselves.
Any questions?
Yes, I have one. I noticed the preferred vehicle's three hundred gallon distributor and the more expensive vehicle's two thousand gallons.
Yes, sir.
What impact would that have on that, your best bet?
The only, the only impact it would have is the larger vehicle that has actually a tandem axle, so it's a little bit longer. However, that's not going to affect us a whole lot because of the areas that we would have problems with that. We'd end up using our trailer anyway. That would mostly be the old bit of the area, but we have very narrow roads.
So this won't be going up a high, high road?
Um, high road problem. There are a few there that we would, even with, even with the two thousand gallon vehicle, we would most likely have to use our trailer to get that up there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a two thousand and seven at nearing Centennial three thousand gallon distributor from Metro Equipment Incorporated.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion as hearing unanimous. Number seven, discussion and update to pavement maintenance program. Mr. Harrow.
Okay, I'm going to actually be presenting this with with, throughout, so you can all see the, the work that we've been doing with this. One second as this pops up and then I will string this. Yes, I apologize. I couldn't get this, get it to do, to both. Turn on the other side of the table.
Ms. Klein, you can see it, but can you? It's the red six on the black seven.
There we are. Okay, so this is our program, I work that you all approved for us to purchase. As you may know, and I did provide a list. We during the fall were able to do a two-inch overlay on all of the roads in the terrace area of Warren. Soon as I log in here, this is what it looks like when I log in.
Yeah, that we all know your password.
Yeah.
Did it show? Did it?
It showed you're hitting that.
I can change it. Change it tomorrow.
That is password to a bunch of assholes.
Yes. Okay, so I work, we come in here and we'll go into our pavement management. And right now, if you look up on the top left, we're showing all of the roads that we have listed here. And it did, so if I go into our map, I can show you the roads that, the area we just recently paved, the terraces and all highlighted there. So those are the, those, that's the area that we recently paved. That, we paved that at a material cost of that was approximately three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-six, three hundred and fourteen.
Can you go back to the document?
Absolutely, yeah.
So the green stuff is what you paved?
Correct. That's the area that we recently paved.
I'm just trying to associate where's.
Would you like to zoom out a little bit?
Yeah, I'm trying to, that's the ballpark, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so I'm just trying to think where, where's the Douglas Cut off? In Warren? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No.
Cole Avenue. Where's Cole Avenue?
Cole Avenue.
Yeah.
Cole Avenue is right there at the top of this here.
Okay, that's Vista, the all the green, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's okay.
That's Vista, there's Cole. That is the terraces area that we paved. We paved every road in there with a two-inch overlay. We're still working on, on trying to raise some of those.
So is this what's supposed to be coming up? Is that what this is?
That's the next list on the street.
Okay, that's.
So this is what we did currently with this year. This is all, we used the one percent sales tax to pay for the material for that. We currently are paving at a nine dollar fifty-six per cubic square yard price. That's material. I don't include our, our labor costs in that because if we were to hire a contractor, we'd still be paying the labor anyway. So that's what our material is, is the material cost for this. And that's where we paved. And now I can show you what the area is that we plan on paving here in the spring now that it's getting warmed up. We have some area, some roads here, again, in the Warren area. We've got, we're going to finish off Center Avenue from Mill Road to Bisbee Road. My mouse is showing up, so I could do that. In fact, my, my mouse might show up. There it is. So we're paving Center Avenue. We're finishing that off up to Douglas Road. We're going to do the Autrimont from Arizona Street to East Vista and Briggs Avenue from, again, Arizona Street to East Vista.
Is there going to be a time when you're going to go the opposite direction on the Autrimont?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's the plan. I can show you, I can show you just a little bit about how we're moving forward after, after we're finished doing our assessments, I can show you how, how that'll work. Just a little, the other roads that we're planning on doing in the spring for this fiscal year. We got Quality Hill. This is, this is one that I've, I've been made aware of for quite some time. So Quality Hill, we're going over to Oak Avenue, Pear Avenue. We're going to do Mayor Avenue and then come up and do Sims Road from off of West Boulevard. That will be at a cost of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We currently have about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars left in our one percent sales tax. You all just approved us to purchase the oil truck, so that's going to take some money away from that. We will have then about twenty thousand dollars to play with.
So these right here that you're talking about, what exactly are you doing? The reason I ask is because one of these roads, there is no road bank. It's the Briggs.
Yes, no, we're.
Outer circle. I mean, it's down to nuts. That's why I'm just wondering what is.
We're doing a, we're doing two-inch overlay, so we'll go clean it up. We'll get it as level as we can and then we'll do a full-on two-inch overlay, just a few. So it'll be a new asphalt. We're just not, we're not packed.
Is there going to be anything to address the flooding, especially in that area? Because one of the issues that's going on, not only that the road being completely obliterated, when it rains, because of the whole structure being rangled, a lot of that water is rushing down into those, into the alleyways. And some of those people, their yards are just vacuumed.
We definitely can do some minor raining. We can do some, some of those things. Diverting the flow, the flow of runoff is going to take more of a full-on engineering construction. But we definitely can do some rare things. We have some low water crossings. We can shore those up. We can put up some minor B channels along the edges so that we can direct the water where it historically goes. So it's not going into beaten yard it should go where it historically goes. Any questions as far as what we're doing in the spring? I can go in, one thing I did want to show you all is how are, how are we going to be moving forward after this? We're going to be using the budget portion of the pavement maintenance networks. I can show you that, if you can see right here on the top line, it says spring paving budget twenty twenty. That's something that we can show you. So what, the way this works is we can do it with two different methods. We can do it with a budget having a set dollar amount, which is most likely what we're going to do when we get to do paving. We, we're, once we have our budget set, then I can take that dollar figure, put it into the budget amount and then select the different types of maintenance. So we would most likely start with our most extreme, either the rebuild thick overlay or overlays. We can put in, for example, let's just throw a dollar amount. Let's just say we had five hundred thousand, which is what we had this past year. I can put five hundred thousand, I can put in the type of, of treatment we want and it's going to tell me which roads I should be doing. Then we can take that leftover money and put it into the next series, most serious treatment and move on. The other way that we can do that is if we came in, maybe this time next year, we said, how much money do we need to do fifty percent of all of our roads? I can come in here and select a percentage and then show you this is how much money we need, we need to do. In this example here, I selected the spring paving twenty twenty and right here you can see that it's going to be, it's estimating at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. I think that what happened, this is one sixteen because when I did the, the council action form, it was missing one segment, so I fixed that. So it's actually a hundred and sixteen thousand now. I can quickly show you how that is done. So if I can close this one. I can go to budgets. I can select a new budget. I'm going to add a budget. I'm going to call this just spring and we're going to do it just on those same roads. So I can then go to the roads that I've selected, in which case it was the spring of twenty twenty. Select add. There it is right here. Edit. So we're going to now tell it that we're going to do the overlays. We're going to give it a dollar amount. I know that it's a hundred and sixteen, so I'll just put a hundred and twenty. We're going to select it. It's going to be this year. And we can apply. Apply. And there, there tells us how much money that's going to cost us to do that. One other thing that we've been doing this week, since we've had a little bit of help with, is we've been doing our road assessments and making sure the way that works out too. So when we do a road assessment, we have somebody actually goes out there. We have a criteria that Iowa has given us. And it's, we can then select the, the different types of fatigue that are on the road. So we can go, let's just say that we're going to select this one and we're going to look at Cobden this and it's going to pull up all of the attributes for this road. It's going to tell us that we've measured that at twenty-five feet wide. We've had somebody go out and say that, give it a rating of a seven. So that's, that's segment. They've given it as a segment. It's actually not too bad. It's pretty good. He's giving it a rating of high fatigue, so it's got some fatigue in there. Low on trans-earth cracks, trans-verseer across, longitudinal cracks are typically cracks that happen within the joints of the road. So each traveling, usually those are in the middle. So that one's low. He says the section of, it didn't have any patchy and it had the low edge patching. So overall, he's at a seven and it says that the next treatment that should have is probably some patching. And it actually come out and added a picture of that road. So we've got that information also. The, our plan going forward for next year, I am trying extremely hard to get to Tombstone Canyon. Will be actually not go to Main Street and Tombstone Canyon from the top to the bottom, all the, up, it's a mile and three quarters. I've been working with some contractors to get some pricing. We've been working real hard. I think that we're going to be able to, I think we're going to be able to do a two-inch overlay on that. And we should have some money left over to do some more roads in addition to that. But that's, that's my goal and I'll entertain any questions you all.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Well done. Item number eight, discussion of possible approval to submit an application for a pre-development planning grant. Mr. Harrow.
So we were, this, the pre-development planning grant or the PPG, the USDA calls that. This would go towards a updating our preliminary engineering report for our sewer lateral. This is, this has been underway since, I think, about two thousand and two. All of the mapping that we have with our sewer lines in all of Bisbee, not just all of Bisbee, but all of Bisbee, Bisbee was generated using this process. This process, they did the preliminary engineering report. We have got, we've got some of the maps. It just when it got to the portion where we applied for the large grant to, to the USDA for, for the WIFUP grant is to actually do the construction, seemed like it stopped there for some reason. I don't know the reason why. But we were contacted and about whether we would like to continue that process. We obviously would like to continue this process, but in order for us to continue that larger grant process, we need to update our preliminary engineering report. The USDA did say that we could be, we could fund that preliminary update with this PPG grant. It is a seventy-five twenty-five grant and it does, we cannot use in kind, but we can use donations if that were, if that were to come to fruition. So at this time, we're asking for approval to start that process and apply for the, that PPG grant.
Have a question.
Is there, is there, Mr. Butler?
It says there fiscal runback, seventy-five hundred dollars. Is that what we'd be on the hook for?
Yes, so seventy-five hundred dollars is twenty-five percent of the thirty thousand. I, I mentioned in the council action form that currently in this fiscal year, we only have twenty-five hundred dollars in that line item. This will not be completed by the end of this fiscal year, so it would go onto the next partner's fiscal year budget.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve the submission of an application for a pre-development planning grant with PPG to the USDA.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Outlaws in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, discussion of possible direction to staff to apply for grants to preserve the city hall structure, and to utilize SHPO and CGO and city grant writers to help with this process to begin immediately for the current twenty twenty, twenty-one year. Ms. Klein?
Uh, I've been approached by numerous people that want to um write grants or apply for grants for the possible um revitalization or slash cleanup of the city hall. Uh, if there are grants available for um stabilizing the structure to use as a side, obviously not a load bearing. And um, in order to do that, if grants were found, we can't as individuals submit them. And so, um, what I'm asking for is um to, I guess, let people proceed to, to look for these grants, because they found some, and um, apply for them, but we have to go through the venue of the city, I might not correct. If grants, I mean, if there are grants that are filled out for, don't they have to go through the city?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
So I can, I can write a grant on my own for the city?
Well, you can write a grant on your own and then give it to the city, if it's awarded, sure.
Mayor, didn't we just, well, not just, but a one thing, didn't we, um, can't remember. What, we had something on the agenda that had to do with grants, that if somebody was writing a grant, they could go to the city?
You know, and it's my understanding as long as it doesn't require any cash.
Right.
Yeah.
From the city.
And that's what I, that's what, you know.
So there's no cash match required, otherwise it needs to come to the county.
Yeah, that was specifically had to do with Danielle Boucherebe and Stephen Peavy. Uh, we're wanting grants and grants for us pro bono, and so we approved them writing grants for us as long as we didn't have to put in bucks.
And I, I thought we had the conversation that other um individuals could also, but I thought there was a process that we had to go through, through the city.
Well, some grants are only eligible by city. Some are not eligible by city. They have to be a five oh one C three, or, or whatever else, and, and specifically, cities are excluded from some of those grants. Um, and so, um, it's, it's a mix as to, as to what. I do know, um, that as an example, CGO crusade doesn't really write grants except for CDUGG. They administer them for a fee, but they don't, they don't write them. Um, they can, I'm told, uh, under some circumstances, we could contract with them to write a grant, but then we would be paying them to do that. Um, they don't do it just because we're a member. So that's, um, so, I guess, my question is, where are we gonna go from here? Where, where, where?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that that, that that can be done, because, I mean, sometimes when, like, like with the school, for instance, I can't just literally write a grant. I have to go through, take man and get.
You bet.
Permission, it has to be approved by my principal, by my superintendent, et cetera, before I can submit. That's what I'm trying to clarify here, so that, you know, if, you know, people are continuing to work on it with this, let's say we come across something, you know, that there's this money that we can do. I don't wanna have a roadblock that says, well, we didn't come for us.
Well, I, I think, uh, Ms. Giacomo, that if you identify the grant and say, this is a grant that, you know, will cover what we want and so forth, then um, if you, in those circumstances, came to us, it would be kinda like the Danielle Boucherebe thing about us saying, if you wanna write that grant, that's super, you know, and we're going to let you use the city's name to do that, and the city's uh, uh, tax identification number, which is required to do that. Um, but I don't think that we can just put out blanket permission. We have to have, as I understand, a specific um identified grant. Is, we found a grant, we're gonna go for it?
Well, yeah, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, that there isn't a roadblock. Okay, let's say we found this.
Yeah.
You know, do we have to have any special signature or apply, you know? That's why I wanna make sure, because like I said, on my other side, you have, there are certain things you have to, which you have to jump through before.
Totally, totally understand.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we've got council member Hanson.
She's calling.
She's calling back, she's been disconnected.
Thank you. I thought it was Will's hairy name. Sorry, buddy, I had to, had to mess with you.
So that's pretty much what the submission was for.
Okay, sir. I don't need, you.
Okay, and as I say, so, um, if, if there are individuals that are searching for grants, it's not something that we have to get permission prior from the city.
No, if you're out there searching for a grant, then you're gonna come to us and say, we found a grant, and here's what it is, and here's what the city's responsibility is in getting that grant. So absolutely not, you do not need permission to search. Absolutely not. So, and we'd all, any, anytime the city can get grants and money and stuff, we appreciate it very much. Is Ms. Hanson back with us?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I'm disconnecting or something, I can't hear anything.
Aha. Well, we heard your dog a while ago, is that something? Mr. Powell?
I agree with our, who has been said so far, but I have a problem with this, this proposal in that it opens by saying, I move to direct staff to apply for a grant, and I would not vote to put any additional work on our staff, especially in these trying times.
The reason I word it that way was because I did not know if there were hoops to jump through which have been clarified, because again, in the school district, there's, I can't do certain things sometimes without.
Understood.
That, that's what that clarification was for. And apparently now that that's been clarified, we don't really have to have staff.
And it wasn't up for a vote anyway.
No, it was just this discussion I had working.
So we're all good, everybody's, at this point's good. Okay, thank you. Item ten, discussion of possible approval and resolution, R twenty dash oh five, submitting to the electors at the general election of November thirtieth, twenty twenty, a proposition to authorize a permanent increase in the city transaction privilege act from three and one half percent to four and one half percent. Ms. Gold?
So I believe we just talked briefly about this at your um last meeting about the potential, so you currently have um one percent that was passed in twenty fourteen, which is not permanent, and would need to go on the ballot in the next election. Um, this would be an opportunity to make it permanent, and then also to talk about the budget ramifications of um adding one percent to the ballot at this time too.
So.
I have a question.
Hold on, one, one, one second, Ms. Hanson and then. Um, thank you for letting me know. Um, I didn't see your hand raised, so.
I am agreed.
Okay, I want, I, there's some misconception, that's why I wanted to make sure that it's understood that this tax is in there now, and will sunset.
One percent, okay.
Yes, one percent is in there now and will sunset. So what we're asking for is for that not to sunset, for that to continue.
Right.
And then, there, above that is a discussion about an additional one percent.
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, questions? Joan?
I am acquainted, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I, um, there is a lot of misinformation, or not misinformation, but um, a misunderstanding, because everyone is thinking that the city, um, the city transaction privilege act is increasing, but that's just the transit uh logic, correct?
Well, the bed tax is, we hope, increasing.
Right.
But that's a di- that's a different one.
Because everyone is thinking that their taxes are, are the, their sales taxes are also increasing, the vendors. There was just, there's, you know, a, they said on Facebook right now, if the vendors or the uh, uh, shops downtown, there's a lot of them that think that their uh sales tax are also going to raise.
With the first one percent, it will not. If we, if we approve an additional one percent, it will.
But for the shops down there?
Yes.
For shops, I thought that it was just for the, the lodging, that if we go to the lodging, um, it was only underneath the terrace, it was going to be, um.
These are two separate taxes, these are two separate taxes, Ms. Hanson. And the TPT is what we're talking about. You're talking about the bed tax.
Right, that's, okay. Yeah, I guess I am talking, is this not the bed tax?
No.
Okay, all right, my, I was under your question, but that's what it was, okay.
This is TPT.
That's what I asked, that's what I thought, um. I wish I just said what it was.
Okay. Yeah, the bed tax, we're asking for two and a half percent.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we already voted on it.
And we voted on it. We just have to have the voters vote on it.
Right, okay.
Okay, this is separate. What we're asking for here is to keep the one percent that is going to sunset. And so we want to get it on the ballot so that we don't um have that slump period. And we're also discussing raising it another one percent.
Okay.
Okay? And the discussion on the one percent, of course, figures that we have are based on what we've had in the past, which has completely changed right now.
And where does that put us, is accounted as far as, um, the state or whatever, I guess the county does, um, comparative, uh, to the other cities?
I thought that's all in the package, is it not?
No.
Because I could've sworn that I, well, then.
I think we've lost information online about that.
Well, I think that you need to know that, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, I know I've seen it, and so I just figured everybody had. Um, it would, it would, I think that we would be in the top, I think, seven cities in Arizona. We wouldn't be the most expensive, but we would be in the top seven, I believe, is the number, but don't quote me on that.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, right now, what we're, what we're looking at to vote on is just the sunset, right?
No, this is, this vote. This resolution covers both in, um, the last paragraph, um, now therefore be it resolved to put before the voters. And then on the next page, um, it says go from three and a half percent to four and a half percent, thereby making the one percent approved in twenty fourteen permanent, with all these additional revenues being dedicated for maintenance, repair, replacement, and improvement of city's infrastructure, et cetera.
Okay, I felt, I felt we were at three and a half now.
We're at three and a half now, including the one percent that's not permanent.
Fair enough, I'm, I'm, I'm delusional.
So, okay, and then last.
We have, we have, this is terribly confused, because I've got a lot of calls, and, and I'm getting friendly calls. Um, there's two taxes here. One tax is existing, and it's very popular, because people can see their streets getting big, they like that. And when I explain that to them, that we're just trying to make a sunsetting tax permanent, they're all for it. But when they, the initial call is, you're raising my taxes by one percent. That's gonna put us over ten percent, which puts us in the stratosphere in terms of other cities in Arizona. That's the, the major complaint that I keep hearing from people. So it seems to me the, the right way to go about this is, is first, get the approval for the popular tax to stop it from sunsetting, and then as a separate issue, deal with why do we need an additional one percent sales tax increase? It needs to be justified, so it can be sold to the people, so that in the elec- in the election, they can vote for it. And right now, the feeling I get is that nobody wants to vote for that additional one percent. They will vote for the sunsetting streets and infrastructure tax because of the results that they see. So there's confusion here, and I would suggest that it needs to be cleaned up.
Okay.
What is our, what is our combined tax rate right now? Is it nine point five?
Nine, nine six?
Because I thought it was five point six at the state, and then ours is, I, I'm just asking, I thought ours.
State of Arizona's at six point six percent, I do not know what Cochise County's portion is.
I have a question.
It's right, and it's hub related. Yes, ma'am?
When we initially talked about this, um, leaving, you know, the, the, what we currently have, and then with the additional one percent, I thought we had talked about that going to public safety, but it does say here, with all these additional revenues to be dedicated for the maintenance, repair, replacement. So, is that saying that the additional one percent would be going to the city?
Well, we did, we did add it also dedicated to essential service, which is not currently, but I, I think Lou does have a point. It may be easier to do this as two resolutions.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest that myself.
And, and the other, um, than to address the essential service.
I, I'm, I'm, I think that, um, I would suggest that we, uh, bifurcate this, and, and that we, we come back, uh, our next meeting.
Sure.
With the, uh, continuing the sunset.
Yes.
And, and we're going to, we're going to be in a different financial position. People are gonna have to understand this, and so we may end up selling a one percent sales tax for just the general, who, who knows at this point? So, um, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, we can certainly prepare that.
So we, that, we're, that's an item we're not voting on, we're just, uh, since it's, since it's discussion of possible approval, we don't, we don't have to do anything, correct? Mr. Ladd better?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll take that as a yes.
The top states the highest combined average, the highest is nine point three seven.
The highest is nine point four seven.
It's what?
Nine point four seven.
Uh, I, I know we've got, Glendale is, Glendale's up in the eleven. Oh, yeah, Glendale's almost closer to twelve, I think.
I did, I did make notes and provide you with comparison. So we'll do comparison, give you resolution, and is there anything else that we should have prepared?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And so, you did that so well, it's time for your city manager's report.
My report. Uh, so we are moving forward with the update of the Warren Historic District. Um, the library has actually added that, um, to the things that they have. Uh, activities they have available for folks to do is to take a picture of their property in Warren and upload it through the library's portal, um, along with the address and, uh, contact information. And then actually, if they have additional information regarding their home, um, specifically a home that maybe was built, uh, nineteen fifty and newer, um, we most likely did not capture the information that we need for the historic survey. Um, but if they leave us a contact number, um, their, and their address in a photo, we will follow up and try to finish up that Warren Historic District, um, submission for national parkers for designation. Um, we're also working on designation for two additional colonial neighborhoods in Bisbee, Zacatecas Canyon, and Saginaw. Um, so I will bring resolutions to your next meeting to designate those as colonias, and then we'll fund that off to the state and hopefully be able to, um, do some infrastructure projects with the funds similar to what's happening in Tim Town right now, um, for the USDA, so. That would be great. And then, uh, some folks, I think the science lab, the library, uh, I know Freeport-Mackmurran's willing to, um, design a rain garden that are working on, uh, park, um, nature park behind the, you know, library annex and the science lab at the school on Melody Lane, they have a plan together. I anticipate we'll have an IGA for that particular park plan at your next meetings.
Can I say something about the IGA?
No.
You can talk to me anytime.
Right, but I'm, I'm lying, yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay, I'm, Mr. Higgins. I moved the review. Wait, oh, you're, if I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's a section here on the agenda for, uh, council comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see, I don't, I don't see you there. I'm sorry?
Now, do we, if council members have to sign?
Yes, sir, no, council, it ha, anything, it has to be on the agenda. So council comments would be, uh, uh, Mayor Protem Pollard wants to discuss streets and infrastructure.
There wasn't an order that had to be.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Yep, and we can get it on that.
All right, now, Mr. Higgins. We have a motion in the second, goes in favor of adjournment. Senator Bunn is stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.